Whoa. Call to order this school committee meeting, what's that?
Fourteenth.
November fourteenth, 2024. Steph, will you lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Your duty and my oath of service, one nation and one God. In your name is my oath of service and justice for all.
We'll do a roll because.
Oh, Susan's not here?
Susan's not here, so we'll do a roll. It's taped, so the minutes will be recorded. Mr. Hatch?
Here.
Ms. Mastrocola?
Here.
Mrs. Mastrocola?
Here.
Mr. Fisher?
Here.
Mr. Whittrich?
Here.
Mr. Sereno, here. Just starting off with the report of the school committee, I wanted to wish everyone a happy Veterans Day. And I know it's passed, but we had a great day at the Belmonte last week. There were a lot of veterans there. It was a good time. The students were unbelievable, and there's some of their work that they've done up here after the meeting. We'd love you guys to come up and look at it. We're going to start putting students' work in the school committee room. In the old days, we used to have people who, the art department and things like that. So the principals that are here tonight, we encourage you to give us what you have, and we'll display it out here. We'll maybe, you know, get some of it from behind here over there. Secondly, as we go into the holidays, a couple of things that just, you know, it kind of gets stressful, so take some time for yourselves. And, you know, like, you know, it's about the students and, you know, but it's about you guys, too, because it's a stressful job, so just take some time in the holidays. And just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, because we won't see you before then. So I don't know if anyone else has anything?
I just really wanted to add, I say it all the time, everybody kind of focuses on the negative stuff that happens in the schools, but Mr. Jones, the band teacher, he took the eighth in the high school to a UMass game to play at halftime with other bands from all over. They, I think they played Dayton, if I'm not mistaken, that day. And it's a pretty big deal, you know, going to UMass Amherst, he took his bus ride out there on a Saturday. So, you know, things like that, that makes me happy to see. So kudos to Mr. Jones. And, you know, I wish we can get more kids involved with the band, like, you know, you see some of these other programs with these, with the big band and stuff. You know, we got an unbelievable teacher, we got unbelievable instruments and a nice room to play in, so if anybody's out there watching and wants their kid to sign up, it's not a bad idea, so let's get rolling.
So is that, is that in the cricket, if it's a band, or is that something we can add to the enrichment program?
We could. They currently have a band, so he's, he's the band director.
Okay.
And there's a class for both middle and high school kids to take part in.
Okay, perfect, perfect. Well, that is it. Turn it over to the reporter superintendent.
All right, I'll just give you a little preview, and I'll give you, I'll email the school committee members budget timeline. We're approaching December, and by the next time we get together as a group, it'll be December. And so we're into that budget season again. I know it seems like it's coming up all the time, but I've already met with the principals. We've already started the budget process on our end internally, so I will share with you a copy of the projected timeline coming up for December, January, and the beginning of February. So I'll get you that. We had a few past events. I did want to acknowledge the Veterans Day celebration, and I do have a citation that was issued that I can share with all of you. I think some of you were there, but not all of you were, but this was a citation that was issued by the governor on Veterans, on the Veterans Day celebration at the Belmonte. And it was a good time. I think a handful of you were there. Saugus High School Hall of Fame met since we've last met, and it inducted a class of 24. I just wanted to list the name of the former sachems that were inducted. Yeah, class of 24.
Oh, I thought you mentioned you inducted 24 people.
No, 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 this is, oh, sorry. It's the class of 2024.
All right.
So this is the first time, I think, in about six or seven years that they had an induction ceremony. So the, the inductees were Lauren Cataldo, class of 2002, Robert Gannon, class of 2005, Marie Johnson, class of 1995, Kayla Vidickevich Krieger, class of 2007, Donald Messini, class of 1987, Todd Nichols, class of 2003, Ashley Panzini Nichols, class of 2004, Olisa Abufuna, class of 2012, Jeff Paleini, class of 1988, Rob Scuzzarella, class of 2006, Craig Sereno, class of 2005, and Melanie Wheeler, class of 2003. So I did want to give them a shout out tonight for their accomplishments and their recognition.
Congratulations.
Yep.
Great job.
The girls soccer team made the tournament. They did have a, a big win at home before bowing out of the state tournament, so they had another successful season. And there's a bunch of all-stars that you'll see in my educator update tomorrow.
Yeah, I talked to the coach, saying that we're going to have them in.
Okay, yeah, we can, we can bring them in. We did have a national signing day for three athletes yesterday, arranged by Mr. Sereno, the athletic director. We have three students that have already signed to play at the college level. Cam Soroco is signed with Division One Bryant College for baseball. Madison Botta has signed with Division Two St. Anselms for soccer, and Cam Bernard has signed with New River Community College in Virginia for baseball.
Oh, wow.
So, and then I, I think there's going to be a couple of other people that might sign in the next, in the upcoming months. Segues perfectly. Upcoming events, tonight, in less than an hour, the Saugus High School Drama Club has their opening night of The Lightning Thief, The Perry Jackson Musical. It's tonight at seven, tomorrow at seven, and Saturday at seven at the high school in the Lemoine Mitchell Performing Arts Center, if anybody wants to go. I'm sure it'll be a, a good performance, it always is. We have Saugus High School Information Night for eighth graders on Thursday, November 21st, from eight, from six to eight. That's trying, that's going to be a night where they get a chance, the eighth graders that we have at the school already, and any eighth graders in the community that want to come in and look at the facilities and look at some of the things that we do at Saugus High School to give them familiarity with the, with the complex. We also have Spirit Week coming up. It starts, I think, on Tuesday. Again, in my educator update, I'll give you that update. The two big public events that come up are on Wednesday, the Wednesday before Thanksgiving is Color Day. And what you have as far as that goes is a huge celebration in the, in the gymnasium. The tradition has come back post-COVID, and the three, the four classes compete against each other for spirit and skits and decorations, and over the next couple of weeks, that's occurring.
I apologize, because it's been a little bit, that's not open to the public in the days of?
No, it's, it's not, it's not open to the public, but the school committee are welcome.
Yeah.
And then open to the public is the Thanksgiving Day game at 10 o'clock at Sereno Stadium on Thanksgiving Day. We play Peabody, our traditional rival, so if anybody's up and the weather hopefully holds off, it'll probably start raining once that happens out of luck, but it hasn't rained in two months. But Thanksgiving Day game is a, is a home game this, this year. And just to give you a foreshadowing, this is the last school committee meeting of November. On December 5th, we, we will have a key focus of the school improvement plans, and the principals will be presenting those to you.
Judy, what about the pancake breakfast? They brought that back in?
Oh, there is a pancake breakfast. Hold on one second.
I believe from 24th?
Yep, give me one second. Pancake breakfast is at the complex on November, on Saturday, November 20?
Sunday.
Sunday, November 24, sorry. 8:30 to 11:30 in the, in the complex cafeteria.
Yeah. Great take. Yeah, it was a good time last year, you know, first, first time back in a few years.
That's right, yeah, it was the first time back since.
Actually, first time in the new school.
Yeah, absolutely. That's what I have, Mr. Sereno.
Thank you. Moving on to the report of, the finance report, we'll hear from Ms. Andrews.
Thank you. So you have before you the FY25 actual to budget as of October 31st, 2024. This is just a snapshot, a moment in time of the expenditures and encumbrances of the school department thus far. Saugus Public Schools has expended and encumbered $10,921,317.42 to date. This budget is a tremendous amount of work. As you know, we have come out of all the pandemic grant funding, and we are now trying to sustain some of the initiatives that were put in during that time. This budget reflects countless conversations with my fellow directors in order to meet the needs of the student population. It also will show all the shifts and changes since June. So if you look at Budget Amendment Number One, it is 133 lines. That supports all of the new hires, the turnovers, the position changes. Sometimes you have someone in, in one position, wants to be in a different building or a different position, all those movements. So these two documents kind of go hand in hand. You also see the revolving fund balances as of September 30th. As I mentioned before, I would be reporting these quarterly. It's much more effective that way. I want to point out to something. Line number two, Fund 2060 McKinney Vento, we have received this year $372,124 in reimbursement. The reimbursement has finally caught up to actual, because if you recall, I tell you that the reimbursement is a two-year lag. I have just completed the F24 end-of-year report that goes through June 30th, 24th. We are in '25. We won't get that money till '26. Okay? So we got, we finally got a good reimbursement. So hopefully, I will not be coming forward in the spring asking for money to be moved to the McKinney line. Let's, let's be hopeful about that. The last document is the grant balances as of October 25th, 2024. That's when I drew them down. As you can see, a lot less grants than we've had in the last few years. The first section is the remaining balances of the title grants and the 240 grant. We'll be expending those in the next few months and beginning to utilize the FY25 grants. So a much fewer grants than in the past. A few other things while I'm here. In an operation standpoint, the regular day bus transportation bid will be going out soon, along with the special education transportation bid. The cleaning contract, I believe the decision was made to go through COMBIES again. I will submit that request for price proposals in COMBIES once our facilities director is hired. This way, that person can take the, the cleaning companies through the buildings and show them what needs to be done. We were going to have a presentation room with since tonight, food service, but they could not be here, so I'll just highlight a few points that they would have mentioned. Universal meals has been a game changer for us. Probably, we have double the amount of students participating in lunch, and we have an approximate 7% to 10% increase in breakfast. So every student is entitled to one free lunch, one free breakfast every day. Some people still little unclear on that. They think they can take anything, but it's one free lunch, one free breakfast. The breakfast has hot and cold choices. I would like the parents and guardians out there to know that. Their children are welcome to come. They should check their building schedule for the approximate time that breakfast is being served, and they're welcome to drop their children off maybe ahead of time and beat the traffic. The menu is quite different than what it used to be in the past. There is enough funding now to really expand the menu. There are a lot of local food choi, um, food products being served. A couple of weeks ago, fish was served, right here from our local waters. At first, the kids were a little hesitant, but thanks to phones, I'm on the, texting back and forth with the food service director in real time, we started offering the kids samples. Once they tried it, they loved it, and it was back on the menu again. So great things are happening. They get a lot of feedback from the students and try to tailor the menus to their tastes so that more kids are able to eat. And another thing we want to mention, the staff is majority Saugus residents and have been serving our students for over 20 years. They're doing an incredible job, and they're being given the ability to create menus and create meals, and it's just been a wonderful experience all around. So those are a few of the things happening in my world, otherwise been quiet. So I hope you'll vote for Budget Amendment Number One so that we can be prepared to go into the FY26 budget with the correct lines.
So on the Budget Amendment One, we, we're just taking, what is that, what are we doing? We're taking the turnover?
So you're reallocating salary lines for turnover, for column movements, for the annual wage adjustment for the medical therapeutic personnel, the confidential clerks, for those people, and any turnovers, yes?
Okay. As far as the FY25 actual, do you see any, do you see any problems arising?
Thankfully, no, not at this time. The only, the only, no, in the operating budget, no. Athletics is a concern. We may need to support athletics from the operating budget, but we don't know that yet.
Yeah, no, I, I think with the Athletics Subcommittee, I think we're working on a plan for that, so.
Okay, that would be helpful.
Perfect. Does anyone have any questions?
Yeah, I just, I don't know if I'm really comfortable with the Director of Finance speaking on the Whitsons. You know, they shouldn't be speaking for Whitsons, because.
No, no, we're going to have Whitsons in.
Yeah, I know, but I don't think that it's her position to be over here telling us about Whitsons. I think it's, you know, it's kind of a little bit of a conflict, to be honest with you. You know, if you're paying the bill and you're advocating for this company, I'm not comfortable with that, you know? So if they're not here, then we just leave it alone. Am I wrong on that?
I'm just, I'm trying to wrap my head around it.
She's putting the bid out.
Yeah, the bid's going out.
And we're advocating for a company that's not here. We shouldn't be doing that.
I don't know if she was advocating or just telling you what they do.
Either way, we shouldn't be talking about it.
Why, Whitsons isn't here? Is that what you're asking?
Right, yes, because Whitsons isn't here.
Okay, because the intern was supposed to be here, but his internship is up, so he couldn't be here.
Well, if they want the contractor, she should send somebody to talk. That's what I'm saying.
So we're hoping, we're hoping there'll be another intern in the spring. So we're not, if it would be the intern working for Whitsons would have come as, as part of his project. I thought it would have been great for him to present and for you guys to learn more about the program, but I told you the highlights.
And when is that contract up? Is that contract up in July?
When did the, the intern was here for one?
The contract?
There's no cost.
When, no, he's asking when the contract.
The Whitsons contract.
Whitson's contract is up.
Uh, two, two years.
Two years, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. So, okay. Perfect. Any other questions? So.
No.
Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to approve the budget entry.
Chair seconds budget entry.
Number one.
FY budget, budget amendment one, to reallocate lines for turnover and column movements, initiate funding between expense lines to align with needs. We'll do a roll. Mr. Hatch?
Yes.
Mrs. Mastrocola?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
Mr. Whittrich?
I'm voting no, because I voted no on the budget originally, so.
Mr. Sereno, yes. Yes, it's for one. Thank you. Moving on to the MCAS presentation.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, we have a student, one student up in.
Yeah, they wrote the one right in front of me. Report from the Saugus High Student Representative to the school committee.
Good evening. So I just have a couple of updates for the class of 22 to eight.
Just your name.
Brianna Liddo, and I'm grade nine freshman. So our Color Day has been going very well. It's been going along very smoothly. It's going on amazing. All the people that are participating are doing such an amazing job helping out. Also, homecoming tickets, if anyone watches this, will be on sale. They should be on sale Friday, this Friday, at both lunches and in the morning. I'm not too sure about that, but, and for our freshman t-shirts for Color Day, if you didn't get a chance to order any of them, they will, we did order extras. So if anyone didn't get to buy one, we do have extras for those people.
What is your theme for Color Day?
We're doing Mario.
And what do, what are your theme for your shirts?
Um, so the shirts just say freshman on them, on the back, and then the front, it, I don't know how to describe it, it's a nice design.
Okay.
I think. I don't know how to describe it.
Yeah, no, no, that's okay.
It looks really.
We shouldn't expect these questions.
To the people that made them, they turned out very well.
Freshmen, if you guys can win it as a freshman, that's a big thing.
Yeah.
We're trying.
Do you guys have any questions?
No.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Now, the MCAS presentation, principals, instructional coaches, and district admin, and we have the Belmonte Steam Academy up first, with Dr. Lukey.
Presenting.
Oh, that's okay. Taylor DePisa and Heidi. Hi, Owen.
Good, good evening. I'm Mari Lukey, the principal of Belmonte Steam Academy.
Listen more.
Here tonight to talk a little bit about our MCAS scores. And just keeping in mind that our MCAS scores is a tool for understanding strengths as well as opportunities within our school's academic program, and we're looking at all the different performances. And we're, we're really looking to continue to grow in any of our areas that we may be having some difficulties. But these results really give us a, a clear view of where we're going and where we can really focus our efforts to continue, continue that growth with our kids. In the first slide, I have our overall math scores, and that's overall for grades three to five. So this data here is telling us that although there is not a lot of growth when we examine the math scores across the grade levels, we are performing at the state average. So this is most likely, and because of our math program, Envision Math, it's called, our curriculum, and we can attest that our math coach, Tracy Ragucci, continues to support all of our educators at all of the grade levels to implement with fidelity in high-quality math curriculum instruction. So as you can see, students are working, they're working hard, and we're just, we're continuing to grow as far as that goes. And we can go to the next slide. Should we just wait? Okay, yeah, perfect. And so, okay, thank you. And then here, overall, you can see on our ELA math scores, this is our overall, the district average for ELA across three to five was a bit lower than the statewide average. This dip from previous years may indicate the implementation of our new ELA curriculum, Witten Wisdom, across all three grade levels. Being in this year three now, we are expecting the growth to continue, as teachers here again are continuing to receive support from Kristen Barclay, who's our literacy coach, in a becoming well-versed in content delivery and the pacing of curriculum. So again, students are working hard and getting quite a bit of support with our, with our coaches as well. And here on the science, our overall science average, the district score for the fifth grade science MCAS was below state average and indicates a bit of a decline from previous scaled scores. But this data tells us there needs to be a focus on science across all grade levels. What we're trying to do is, even though students are just taking the science test in grade five, we want to work with all grade levels, so it's kind of a cumulative effect to really support students and give them more of that experience. We do have Project Lead the Way as a program in the school, which has been a tremendous program that we are working with students in all grade levels. So we're continuing and looking to continue to build our science curriculum. So again, this, this is an area we're continuing to work on, and this represents just our grade five students. And here, I've, I've listed some of our glows, and something that is important to remember, there's something called a student growth percentile. So if schools, student growth percentile has improved, it's a strong indicator that students are benefiting from targeting strategies and resources that foster academic growth, and it signifies progress towards helping students achieve better long-term outcomes. And this is an area we noticed within Belmonte, our students improved from last year to this year in many areas, and you can see the highlighted areas. So in grade four math, our student growth percentile was above the state average when we consider that from last year till this year. It went up as well. It was 2.3 in grade four for ELA, which was consistent with the state. And then it was plus 6.4 for grade five math, that was above the state average. And then 8.1 overall student growth percentile in grades four to five math. And again, we're still working on all of these different things, but overall, the growth percentile in grades four to five in ELA. So you can see those particular areas. And the standards that are aligned with high-quality instruction, we're making sure our teachers are using the curriculum that we're giving them. We have Witten Wisdom, like I mentioned, for ELA, and that's year three. And our foundations program is now grades one, grades one and two, as they're coming up from the VELT, and then grades two to three. And then math is across the board, Envision Math is the curriculum that we're using in grades two, three, four, and five. So that was a couple of the highlights. We also have, we're very lucky, on Wednesdays, we have Common Planning Time for our teachers on Wednesdays, and I'm going to tell you, it's an extremely productive time. We work with our coaches and Susan Turbin, our curriculum director, and really focusing in, we have, we have a shared Google Doc. People put down exactly what they're working on, and we collaborate and we go around together and, and talk with teachers, and they have specific activities that the coaches and administration have worked together to really help focus and guide the teachers. So we've been really fortunate to have that time. And again, I, I want to mention our coaches, Tracy Ragucci for math, and Kristen Barclay, because they, they have been a valuable source for our school, for our teachers and administrators, all of us to rely on to really help gain that curriculum knowledge and really continue that guidance as we go. So those are some of our glows. And I want to mention, so in our areas of growth, we are looking at these carefully and examining times during our school day to really look at where we can improve. We really want to find additional opportunities for focused instruction, building extra practice for key skills for students, and making adjustments just in our teaching methods. And some of the things that I've listed up here, I had the opportunity with our teachers at our faculty meeting just yesterday to talk about. to talk about our WIN Block. WIN, WIN is, stands for What I Need for Students. And we're working with teachers to create a plan of what kinds of things we can do with students during the WIN Block. And that gives kind of an opportunity to capitalize on pulling students into small groups, giving kids time to work in journals, maybe working on an eye-ready math program, or just giving those extra supports for students during that little bit of time. Because sometime, and they also, they have that independent work. We have a reading program. And then giving extension activities and really working on, even looking at students who are meeting expectations and really pushing them up into that next level of exceeding expectations as well. So it's really putting our heads together, collaborating, and figuring out what other things we can do to support teachers. But the teachers did a great job at the staff meeting, coming up with ideas and sharing, and they're even sharing resources with each other. We even have our second grade, who they have activities that they share in the teacher's room that they're all using, and they collaborate and share with each other. So we really support that for teachers and really work together. So when we're talking about the grows, we're also aligning testing protocols across all grade levels. And that just really means creating consistent approaches of how assessments are designed and how they're administered, how they're evaluated, to really help kids feel comfortable and be familiar, I think is the word I'm looking for, with different questions and really just different formats to help them to be successful students. And we're looking at vertically aligning our science instruction, like I said before, in grades two to five, to really support that cumulative growth as they go up to the different grade levels. Science instruction is built into classroom schedules, and teachers are utilizing district resources. We have a mystery science program, Generation Genius. And then the grant that I know Ms. Turbin has worked with all of us on this project, Lead the Way, and that continues to grow. And as a STEAM school, it's a focus that we want to continue working. So we're looking at data analysis and building time into our common planning across, across the grade levels. So again, in keeping the, the growth mindset in mind, I think it's important to realize that it is, it is a learning journey. And as Belmonte Steam is committed to, to using our insights that in analysis, the analysis of the data to foster an environment where all students can succeed. And with that effort and our strategic planning can really help and, and support students. These are just, I wanted you to just visually see our growth percentiles. And that was the areas that we went up, that I mentioned, in grades four and five math. That was the 8.1 in math. And like I said, although we may be falling a bit below the state average as a school, we've shown gains and we showed improvement. And if you look across the years, but especially from last year to this year, you can see those areas of growth. And this is on our ELA slide, too. So within that, and where I circled, is we are, you know, we did go up 1.5 in the ELA. But again, we know the areas, we're really analyzing the specific areas of where we need to keep improving. But as a school, we're going, we're working on going in the right direction. And as with the student growth percentile, that is happening. Grade five, they, they only take the test in grade five, so you can't really see where we are. But again, those are, with the curriculum and with our project, Lead the Way, that's the area that we're really focusing on to help with our, our science program. So we're proud of our successes. We recognize where we can improve. And the results are guiding us as we look closely at how we can better support our students and strengthening the overall learning experience for kids. We're looking at daily schedules and instructional strategies to, to support any of our struggling areas. But really, I'd like to highlight with the staff, the collaboration is amazing. They are really looking at those targeted interventions and really looking at all students, our ELL students, our special education students, and, and really realizing that they're there, they're available to support our students. So, so that's kind of where we're at right now.
Thank you very much. I'll, I'll be honest with you. I'm disappointed, and it's not, I'm not here to say, I know how the teachers work, I know how you guys work. But it never seems like we make improvement. It seems like we're just two steps forward, two steps back. And I don't know what you need from us as a committee, but we, we need to do something. We can't keep going down this path. Next year, we come in and we're up two points here and down five points here. Something, we need to do something. We can't keep continually doing, coming back here without the answers. And, and as I always say, challenge us. You know, we're part of this. We're, we're part of what's, what's happening here. It's, it's, it's a whole community. It's not teachers, administrators. It's no one's fault. I don't think we're here to assess blame to anyone. I think we're just, we're just here to, we need to fix it. And I think, I, I think we need to be challenged as a committee. And I think we, we got to figure out something together, so.
Yeah, I kind of agree with everything you just said. Not a big fan of the MCAS anyway, but I know we have to deal with it. It's a big test for fourth and fifth grade kids, let's face it. I mean, we have some enrichment programs. I know we have a whole bunch. Is there any way we could target where the kids, the kids that need extra help in, in science or whatever it is that we're lacking in? You know, is there a way that we can get some enrichment in, in that area? Not just, you know, the fun stuff, you know, the stuff that, that the kids are falling behind in, you know?
Absolutely. And we've, we've talked to our teachers about that. And increasingly, we do have our after-school, they have a STEM group after-school as well. And within our, in, you know, our enrichment program, Bridget Vado is now running the program, and we, we offer it out to teachers. But academically, absolutely, we're looking at all kinds of programs to have them jump in. And anything that can give that little bit of academic support, of course.
Yeah. I hate to say it, but you guys are the foundation down there, you know what I mean? So if we get to them young and we get them ready, and by the time they get up to the middle school, you know, they're going to, they're going to understand what's going on with the MCAS and stuff. You know, so I know, believe me, I wouldn't want to do it. It's not an easy task, you know? But I think that, you know, we do have some, some ideas that we can maybe put in motion, you know? I know you guys have been working on it, so hopefully something helps, you know?
Yeah, thank you, absolutely.
Pretty much on the same lines. Like, sometimes I just think, what, what is the biggest problem? Is it, I'm sure as teachers, you guys all talk about this. Is it attendance with the kids? Is it attendance with the teachers? Are there enough teachers in the classroom? English as a second language. Are we addressing, like, everything that needs to be addressed and putting it on the table? That's what I think, because like the chairman said, we keep two points, two points, two points, but then we, we keep coming back. And again, like Mr. Whittridge said, I, I'm not in the classroom, but we're here to help you. And if we don't know what's going on, if there's a certain problem, a consistent problem that's going on, we kind of need to address that. Because I know attendance has been a big issue with kids. And so, you know, we need to, we need to zero in on, there's got to be something that we can zero in on to make some of this better.
Absolutely. And I think that's, and that's what I think, you know, from what I was saying, those are the areas we're really looking at. We're looking to tweak things and, and build things up. And yeah, definitely looking at the different subgroups. And we are lucky, we got another ELL person this year. We definitely are looking at where the areas we are continuing to grow.
Or even reaching out to the, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt. Even reaching out to the parents themselves, like, personally, I never used to like when I would get the envelope and I'd see Joey's MCAS scores, and I'm like, oh, okay. Yep, they need to, parents need to be held accountable as well. And I'm just talking about a conversation, like, hey, Joey's having a little bit of a rough time. Can we, why don't we have him stay after and do this program? Or why don't we just, you know, little stuff like that? If one friend stays, then five will.
Absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, thank you.
We can keep working on it.
Thank you, thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I don't have too much to add outside of, I really feel there's a couple of things that have been said here that we do have the key on. And one is accountability, but I agree with the chairman. You guys have to hold us accountable, too. And we need to give you the tools that you need to help fix this issue. And I think that's one of the most important things said here. I appreciate all the hard work that you folks do. But we also, I also understand that it does take a team, and we have to tackle this together.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chair, I just have a quick question. So, and thank you for the report.
Sure.
And I'm cognizant also, as you said, too, we're looking at one test that fifth graders took. We're not able to look at what second, third, fourth graders doing on the same data sheet. So it's difficult to, to kind of articulate that. The question I just had was, just like looking at the trends over the years, it looks like it's in the, it's the, the MCAS from last year was, was almost like where there was like a swerving, you know, compared to, to that overall trend. Was, to what Ms. Mastropova said, was there anything that kind of was highlighted in the last year that may have been a bigger issue than in past years for? I'm like looking specifically like at, you know, grade five science, for example. Like, was there some one thing or two things that may have?
No, I think it's, it's more or less, we're looking to build the science program over all of the different grades as a cumulative piece. And then we've been lucky to put in our Project Lead the Way program, and kids are, are kind of experiencing that. And so it's really just building and growing and continuing to work with the kids and giving them some of that hands-on experience, experience, too, to really help them feel that meaningful learning as well. So it's, it's really, you know, accommodation of different things. But I think, you know, we're, we're just continuing to work on it with them. And that's why I'm saying teachers are analyzing and collaborating and figure out different ways. Because there's all different types of learners.
Right.
Mr. Chair? I do want to point out that we did have a discussion a few meetings ago about the curriculum. This is the first, a second year that everybody's going to be on the same page, doing the same curriculum.
Exactly.
So we all understand it is going, it's not going to be tomorrow, it's not going to be the next day. But it will happen eventually. But we, like I said, we're just concerned that maybe we need to help give you guys something that will help give it a boost, you know?
Sure.
Because I know Ms. Turbin and all the coaches have been working really hard trying to get everybody on the same page, and it's not easy, you know? So hopefully, year three, we see more improvements, that's all.
Mr. Chair, I'm going to, can I speak real quick? Okay. And I don't want to cut off the high school, the secondary presentation, but I, I do, I do share the disappointment. I would have liked the scores to have improved or not flatlined. And Saugus has traditionally been kind of that flat line. That's pretty much our problem all along with MCAS is that we just don't necessarily see the improvement at every level. So, and that's what the growth percentile is sort of measuring. So you look at the students who traditionally struggle, how do they do? You look at the students who traditionally fall in the middle, how do they do? And you look at the students that, that often score high, how do they do? They all keep moving forward at the same level. While I share your disappointment, I do think the one thing, if you ask for support, I think right now we're in a fairly good place from a curriculum and implementation standpoint. We leveraged the pandemic, we leveraged the funding in the pandemic to implement Envision and Witten Wisdom at the elementary school and Carnegie Witten Wisdom going through the high, the secondary levels. And I think what we now have is we're in that phase where we're, we've done the implementation. We've, we've sent people to trainings, they're working on it. They have done observations and feedback loops. So I think we are, from an implementation standpoint, sitting in a good place. We have coaches which, and I think if you look at some of the highlights, the, when, when you take advantage of the coaching and the element of coaching that's out there, the instructional coaching, I think you'll see successes in that pockets. I think the teachers, those who embrace that will find more success. But I think you've, it's a learning curve for the staff, too. These are not easy implementation. I had the good fortune of, I mean, I've experienced it firsthand as a teacher in a classroom using the new high-quality instructional materials. And it is not the traditional materials where I can come in and teach a lesson like I did for 20 years. There's a lot of prep work, there's a lot of thinking, there's a lot of planning, there's a lot of trying to figure out where the lesson could go. And I think as, as time goes by and the teachers get more comfortable with that and the students get more comfortable with that kind of expectation all along, I think that's where you're going to track improvements. I'm not, you know, we're going to go, I won't say it. We're not going to go to the top of the world here.
To the moment.
Okay? I, I didn't say it. But at the same time.
Yeah, but why not reach for that?
I, well.
Sorry, I must be out of the loop.
So, so, but what I am saying is I do think that when you implement the curriculum, once the teachers get more comfortable with it, because there is a learning curve for the teachers as well, I think you'll see the students meet success. And I think there's going to be a really good example later on where, you know, students that had Carnegie math in sixth grade and then seventh grade and then eighth grade, I think you'll see where the success really kind of went along the line and went up and went, and trended in the direction we want. Again, there's pockets of it. I like to see it more on a global level. But I think what, if you ask what support do we need? I think the support is we need to make sure that we don't dismantle the structure that we have in place, because I think that's the tendency that we do, is we don't, we, we've got an implementation in place, we've got the, we've got the curriculum, we've got the resources, we have the teachers working with the resources at hand. We have instructional coaches at the secondary and elementary school level. I think we need to stay the course and make sure that we don't just all of a sudden give up on it because funding becomes an issue.
No, I, I agree with you. I just, I just.
Oh, we're all, we're all disappointed in the outcomes. Every time you teach a class, and I was a teacher who taught math, so I had MCAS, I had SATs, I had AP exams, and there were years that went better than others. And you're always disappointed when your students don't do as well. And I can say from a, from a past experience, you blame yourself a little bit. What, what could I have done different? What reflection is, you know, what can we do? And I know there's teachers out here today that do that as well on a daily basis.
There's a million external factors.
Exactly. But I think we just, we have to stay the course.
I just want you guys to know, we're in it with you. It's not something that, hey, gee, we got, we're part of it, so this, this is a team thing.
Yeah, we, we have it in place. I just don't want to see it dismantled.
No, no.
Mr. Chair, can I say one more thing?
Yeah, sure.
Just one, just one more thing. I just think we just need to be a little bit more transparent, that's all. Like, if teachers need help or they need more, like, you know, you get tired of hearing, I'm going to be, I'm, I'm a parent, just as much sitting up here as a school committee member. And I took this seat to be real, and I am real. And I am tired of hearing in the schoolyard, constant things like, this one's not here, and we need more help, and we need more substitutes, and we need this, and we need that. It's just like, you can't keep listening to all these things. We've got to collaborate together. And I feel bad because I think teachers don't want to tell on each other, as well as nurses don't want to tell on each other, because I come from that union sort of, we don't want to rat each other out or this or that. But we're not doing the kids or any of us any good if we're not going to be real, real and come into the school committee meeting and present on the table, like, this is what's happening, this is what we need more help with. Can we give it? If we can give it, we can give it. If we can't give it, we can't give it. I mean, we all know it's about a budget. But absolutely not getting rid of the programs. No, I totally agree with you, not like starting all over with that. It's just, I'm just so tired of like tippy-toeing around, like, well, we're doing, it's, we're, we're not being honest about something. And we need to start bringing stuff to the table. It's just, we keep going around and around. And I've always said, I'm not okay with being okay. I'm not. So, that's it.
Dr. Cuzavella, next.
Sorry. No, we'll do that at the end. Yeah, sorry. Oh, oh, hold on.
Oh.
I'll try to do this, I apologize if I screw this all up.
Okay. Good evening, everyone, and thanks very much for the opportunity to talk to you a little bit about how the analysis of the MCAS for grades six through 10 has looked. We had an opportunity on the professional day to have our teachers get together for a good amount of time to really dig into the MCAS with the coaches and, in some cases, with the program coordinators. Andrea Wheeler, who's the math coach, Jess Manuel is English Language Arts. They spent a lot of time going through the MCAS data with the staff and giving them the tools themselves so they could dig into it as grade-level staff and really start to take a look at areas that we could definitely target for improvement. So this is somewhat of a brief presentation, but we tried to identify areas where we felt we had shown some improvement. And there's a lot of work to do, and that's being honest, to your point. It's good work, the curriculum is in place, and a lot of the staff has embraced the curriculum in grades six through 12, and we just have to keep at it. And I think based on some of what you'll see here this evening, we are heading in the right direction, and it should encourage people to embrace it more and stick with it because we are seeing results from students, that they are in fact learning the material, mastering material, and moving in the right direction. So this first slide talks about some of the glows for English Language Arts at the middle school. And if you take a look at the gray box, you see that at both sixth, seventh, and eighth, at all three, actually, we have made some gains, some very modest, some not so modest, more above the state average. But we have made progress, and it's all hooked into the coaching support that teachers are receiving, the high-quality instructional materials at all grade levels that are now being used and used regularly, and the curriculum scope and sequence, which I just mentioned a second ago. We are in a good place with the curriculum. So there was definitely improvement over the previous year, and sometimes it's difficult to compare year to year because it is apples to oranges. It's a different group of students, you're not judging the same students all the time on what they're, what they're being tested on. But we did make some gains. The grow area that I wanted to highlight is the 10th grade, and we are working hard to move our scaled score up into the meeting category. And that would be, in the old days, they called it proficient. So that's the proficient category, and that, we have a lot of students who are just below that. They're in the high end of the, the next level. Halfway through that level approximately are the students that they say not meeting, not meeting. So we have moved some kids and some students up at least two points to the average, and we're continuing to work on that. But that's really the goal initially with the 10th grade ELA, is to move more students into the meeting category. And then eventually you want to start working toward the exceeding category. You want all of your students in meeting and exceeding, and very few in the not meeting that, this course. So you see that we talk about continuing our coaching support. We are implementing a new curriculum at the high school, this Common Lit 360. It ties in nicely with the Witten Wisdom curriculum, so it isn't anything that students would be unfamiliar with. And it is being used by the staff, and they are finding it to be a very good curriculum. They are taking advantage of the professional development opportunities that are being offered through Common Lit, and they are starting to see some of the results and the fruits of their labors just in the first few months. They're seeing students producing some better work. We are really focusing very specifically, you see the last line there, on the writing and the writing process. That is an area that is a growth area, sixth through 12, regardless of whether they're taking MCAS or doing SATs or taking AP tests. Our writing needs work. And once our students develop good habits, a strong writing process, we will see differences in all of those standardized tests. Plus, there are open response questions on the math, MCAS, on the math SAT, on the AP tests that have math centers, the calculus and the statistics. They still need to know how to put sentences together, and the same would be true for science. So writing is across all curriculum, and it's a very important focus. So the Common Lit 360 curriculum is a great step in the right direction. It is our, you know, we're in our infancy with this. It started midway through the year, I believe, last year, is that right, Susan? And so they haven't even really used it for a full year, but it is, it is going in a good direction. This, we're really, really proud of what's been happening with the math. Math is moving along at a good pace. Our student growth, you heard Maureen talk about student growth. Our student growth in English Language Arts, math and science, is showing some good signs of moving in a, in the positive direction. Our proficiency is increasing, and you see over three years since we came out of COVID that the school hasn't, has gone up 11% for proficiency in math. And that last bullet on the statistics and probability, that's all due to scope and sequence. That's focusing on that component that we were weak at. When, when you get an opportunity to look at the test questions, you can see the categories where our students have had weakness and trouble in the past. It doesn't mean that the same amount of those questions will be on the coming test, but it is a component. So to make sure that we're finishing the curriculum prior to the students taking the test is really important. And that has been something that Carnegie has enabled them to do. This is big news, and I do want to make sure that you see this. Our current ninth graders, which were last year's eighth graders, had the highest student growth in math in the entire state.
This is phenomenal.
It is, because it's 81%. That's like unbelievably imagined, it's just wonderful.
Yeah.
And you'll meet the teachers, I believe, shortly. They clearly have embraced the curriculum, and they've worked really in lockstep, and they've presented the material, and they've given the students the opportunities to be challenged but also make their progress. And this is the result of sticking with the curriculum, encouraging our students, giving them the opportunities to grow and get to this place, because they did phenomenal. And that's, we, we actually are recognized by the state for this. So this is a huge deal for us, that we are at this place with our current ninth graders who had a great eighth grade year and felt very prepared. Mike will give you the example of his daughter. When he asked how she thought she did, she said, well, we did it all in class. So it was very familiar and understood. It doesn't mean that every student got the highest score they could get, but they knew what they were doing when they got there to take that test. So that's a wonderful, wonderful testament to follow.
Yeah, let's, let's recognize the two teachers and the math coach at the secondary level who, who did all the legwork on this. And credit the students because the students had to perform, but I want to recognize them. Mark Sherunder, Jim Fitzgibbons, and the math coach Andrea Wheeler. If you want to stand up or you have anything you want to say.
Great job, guys, really.
And if you take a look, I know it's a little small in the right-hand corner, you can see that from 21 to 24, we made growth every single year, and it was significant from that 25.1 all the way up to the 81. So it's, it's been wonderful to see that following the curriculum, doing everything the right way, getting the kids enthusiastically involved in their math, you know, that's a big thing, and making sure that they're prepared and that they've mastered information, because that's what this is pretty much about, is the ability to master information. So I'll be looking forward to those students when they take the 10th grade test next year. Hopefully we see, you know, a similar performance on our math scores, because it would be wonderful to see that carried all the way through. Let's see here. So some places to work. You know, I mentioned that we were really focused on, in English Language Arts, moving students into the meeting category. So with math, we're really focused on moving them into meeting and exceeding, because we have a good chunk of students in the meeting category. But now we're really trying to work on rigor in our high school math program and really convincing students that they in fact can do it and they can do it at a high level. So again, the use of high-quality instructional materials, the coaches being very hands-on. Andrea's in classrooms all the time, she works really in sync with a lot of the staff on a regular basis. We are trying to spiral in the core foundational skills. So skills they learned potentially in eighth grade, they just spiral right through, all the way through 12th grade with those foundational skills. You just continue to keep them in front of the, in the forefront so that they know they're important and they have to keep going back to them. In history, when I was a teacher, I used to call, on their tests, I'd call it my oldies but goodies category. Things we had done that, oh, by the way, this still impacts what we're talking about right now. So those core foundational skills never go away, and they need to be constantly in front of the students and pointed out. Also, again, incorporating the strategies for problem solving, conceptual problem solving, that's been a big component of our math program, trying to get students to do more critical thinking and problem solving so that when they see these kinds of questions, not just on MCAS but on SATs, PSATs, on the AP exams, that they'll, they'll understand and know how to solve it and how to set it up in order to get to a solution. So all important components that we continue to work on. Science, I asked Gail Hashem, who's the newly appointed program coordinator for science, if she would take a quick look at our science scores so that we could start thinking about that data. This is a test they take in the ninth grade, it's biology. And you see that over two years, we have increased proficiency by 24%. And we feel pretty fortunate, we've decreased that not-meeting category, we've cut it about in half. So again, as I said at the beginning, we have a lot of good work to do. And it's work that just involves using the data to make good decisions about the curriculum and the assignments and the problems that we give students. It's all informed by the information that the teachers get back when they're using common assessments, when they're talking to each other about their programs and what success they're having, and why are these students, they're learning the same information, but why are these students doing it this way, and they're more successful than this group of students? So those are all conversations that have to take place. We don't have the opportunity right now with our current schedule to have much conversation, common planning time. We do need that, we need departments to be able to meet and talk to each other, teachers talk to each other about the curriculum and about what they're seeing in student performance. So that's an aside for me, as the principal, to be working out, you know, what's a better schedule for us, so that we can build some time for our teachers to have those meaningful conversations. And then the last piece of this is, I was here in the fall, I think September, to talk to you a little bit about AP. So we did want to have some advanced placement highlights for you, just to remind you. I, I think we talked a little bit about this. So the AP Psychology course, which I think Mrs. Hashem is here? No, not here. Okay, well, Mr. Hashem's here. I'm sure you can speak to the AP Psych, right?
Sure.
67% of our students scored a three or higher when statewide and globally the percentage was lower than that. So our kids did pretty well. You know, I think I mentioned to you in the fall, a three is a good score on AP. In many instances, a college or a university will allow a student to receive a three to perhaps move to the second year of a course as opposed to taking the freshman introductory course. In AP US History, and I know Mr. Brazil is here, 83% of the Sogus students scored a three or higher when globally the percentage was lower than 72%. Rob's right over here. So doing a really good job. We also had the AP World History that Mr. Fontanella teaches. 80% of the Sogus students scored a three or higher when the statewide percentage was 77%. And globally, the percentage was lower than 64%. So Mr. Fontanella is also here this evening. Kids did a wonderful job. And the history courses are, sometimes can be particularly challenging because of the breadth of what they cover, and you never know what exactly is going to show up on that exam. Because the US is a little more compact, it's only 250-ish years of history, but world history is 2,000-plus years, so sometimes things appear there that you may not have spent more than a class on. But to have 83% and 80% of our students getting a three or higher, that's, that's a good testament to the work that our students and our staff is doing. And I know that I did definitely talk about Ms. Crepo's AP Pre-Calculus. First year it was offered was last year, and the kids took the test in the spring, and 92% of our students got a three or higher when the statewide average was 80% and the global percentage was lower than 76%. Christina is here. And those are, were those sophomores that took it?
Juniors.
They're juniors, that are now seniors, okay. So that's juniors taking a pre-AP Calculus, and they, if, again, first year we offer it, first year the teachers got it, and the kids did a phenomenal job. So there's some really good things happening. And we're just going to stay the course and continue to look ourselves in the mirror and say where we need to improve and do it. That's, that's the name of the game. I'm happy to answer any questions.
I just, thank you, and I, I think the one thing we're just looking for is just a consistent improvement, right? And I think you guys have a great plan. I, I trust your process, so, and I appreciate the time. And you guys out there, the teachers, you guys, it's right there, you know, numbers don't lie.
And these are, Mr. Chair, sorry to interrupt you. Some of these classes have a lot of students that actually took it. If you look at, I think it's, you know, world history, there were 20 students that took it. So it's not just three kids that did well and one didn't. It, the numbers are pretty high, you know, psychology had like 26 students, or 21 students. And, and I do want to, I do want to say this because I'm extremely proud of her. Christina Crepo and Andrea Wheeler took on the AP Pre-Calculus. I know, like, and I'm giving Andrea credit, and I'm not trying to embarrass you, but I, I don't think that I can explain enough about what the coaches do, these instructional coaches. I was a, I was a department specialist, I was a coordinator. It's a little different model now, and it's somebody who's going in there, in the classrooms, not necessarily evaluating, not, you know, not critiquing anybody in a top-down manner. This is somebody who's in there, working with somebody, and I had the good fortune, like I said, when I, when I went back into the classroom and was teaching with the Carnegie, which was all new for me, she actually coached me through a lesson, a couple lessons, a unit. And to be honest with you, it makes a huge difference to run ideas by somebody, to coordinate with them, to get a second, you know, pair of eyes in there. I think the coaching model does work. I think that it's, it provides a lot more than people give it credit. I think that if you just look at it, because again, you know, you look at our MCAS numbers, we're not necessarily great in the area of math a couple of years ago. Well, these are the kids one year later. And our, you know, it is the top-level kids, but there's 26 kids that took that test. So there's a lot of kids that did really, really well on a new AP. So there's a lot of kids that did really, really well on a new AP course. So I'm very, I'm very proud of how that works. And again, I think if you look at the direction we're heading, I think we're heading in the right direction. I think it's just, there has to be trust that the curriculum, the curriculum is there, there's trust that, that it's the right curriculum. Like I said, we, we leveraged the pandemic and aligned ourselves with, with instructional materials that align directly with where the state's going. And I think that it does encourage a lot of problem-solving skills and a lot of areas that when I was in school, we would, would get a problem, do a problem, be done. Get a problem, do a problem, be done. Now, we don't live in that world anymore. And to be honest with you, and I say it as a math teacher all the time, we have a situation where a lot of the stuff that we did when, when I was in high school, or, or a lot of you were in high school, maybe I'm dating myself, but we didn't have the calculators, we didn't have the internet, we couldn't just Google something and find a formula and then plug and play and show how to do it. Well, that's great that you can do that now, and the students can do that now. That's a skill in and of itself, but then what did the answer give you? What does the information give you, is really what they need to do with their career in college and moving forward. Not just getting a formula, plugging it in, getting the answer done and happy, because right now, they can Google that. They can walk their way through it. It's a little bit more than that, and I think that's why there's a learning curve. I think that's why, again, we're working with, we're working with the teachers, the coaches are working with the teachers, and it's just a matter of time where I think we will be making progress in the near future. That's my hope anyway, so.
Thank you.
First, I just want to say, you sound like you've been here for about 10 years. You know what I mean? No, really, you, you really laid things out, and you laid out the plan and what's going to happen moving forward. And like I said, it sounds like you've been here for a long time, and, you know, you have to lay the land already.
I have good people. I can't take credit for that. I have good people helping out.
Yeah, I know Andrea's got a huge job over there, so, you know, it's, you do middle school as well, correct? Yeah, so I know it's, it's a big job. I do want to, I'm going to single somebody out, Mr. Schrander. My son had him a couple of years back, and my stepson has him now. His open house is, you've mentioned engaging, he's very engaging in the open house. You feel like you want to be in that class. The parents feel like they want to be in the class. So I can only imagine how the kids feel when they're in there, you know? But you earn your grade in that class. It's not a, hey, good job, bud, no, here you go, here's an 80. You know, it's, you got to earn it. And that's, it makes me happy to see that he's one of the top teachers for, and Mr. Fitzgibbons, you as well. I don't think I've met you before, my kids haven't had you, but congratulations to you guys. It's really a great thing, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair.
I have personal experience with Mr. Fitzgibbons. He taught my son, and him and Sophia Hennessy, and they were, he's absolutely wonderful. Answered all my questions, sat with us. Can't say enough about him. He puts a lot of work into his students, and I, I love the way he teaches. On another note, I've never had Mr. Schrander, but I will tell you that one of my friends has a sophomore, not at Saugus, who's doing phenomenal in math, and his friends asked him, how do you get this? And you know what his answer was? I had Mr. Schrander. So, and that was just two weeks ago. So just wanted to let you know that. So thank you for all you guys do, all of you.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. Chair. Thank you for the presentation. Thank you to all the teachers and the coaches and everyone for, for what you do, because this is the end result of it. I just wanted to say to the committee members as well, one of the things that's been mentioned tonight, and I think you'll agree with it, is, like you said, when you look at the M-class, every time it's a different group of kids. So it's difficult when you look at last year's scores, this year's scores, because it's an entirely different group of kids. I was talking about, you know, fifth grade science earlier, and all I can think of is now they're in, they're in your building, because those are the current sixth graders. So as we look ahead, it's important to not only track, you know, how does this grade every year reset, but how are those kids progressing through the system? And, and that's important for us to remember as well up here.
Yeah, I can actually speak to that. Ms. Wheeler, what was Brody's growth?
Yeah, so Brody's growth, which is Mr. Fortinella's son, from grade eight to grade 10, was, I believe it was a 92, I believe it was a 92% growth, which was one of the highest in the sophomore class.
Yeah, and that's, that's for the teachers. I mean, that's, you know, every single one of his teachers have been amazing so far, except for Mr. Fontanella, but everybody else has been amazing. But, but his growth was 92%, and that's, that's what we're looking for. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair, I just want to say one more thing. I, I know, I just, I do want to thank, because I've thanked a bunch of people, but I, this couldn't have been done without Susan Turbin, who's kind of overseeing the entire curriculum department. She's put in and implemented all this at the, you know, at the head of the table, so...
She got Employee of the Year.
I know, I know she did, but I did, I did want to, I did want to acknowledge her.
You got that plaque in your pocket still?
I did want to acknowledge everything that she's done, because again...
Yeah, I think we all think the same of her, so, I mean, Mrs. Turbin.
That's, that's a big job.
You drive around with that plaque in your car, right? Just to show people, people over. Thank you.
Casey didn't stop, so she flashes it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on to the presentation of Saugus Middle High School Ski and Snowboard Club.
Hi, I'm Jill Logier. I am the parent volunteer that organizes the ski and board club.
And you do a lot of work.
I do, I do. The kids love it. Honestly, when I, like, the first time I get back in the town for the summer is usually Founders Day, and they see me, and they say, Jill, you bringing the club back? Jill, can we sign up? So it is a lot of work, but they love it, and it makes me happy. So this will be my third year running it, if it's approved, but it started back in 2019 by Kelly Benikiotis, 1920, obviously 21, they had to close because of COVID, but it started with one bus of 50 kids, but now up to 85 last year. So I'm hoping to get about 100 this year. The two coach buses each holds 57, so again, hoping 100 kids. Some come that have never, ever been on a ski or a snowboard. This, Pat's Peak has a great program for learning. The kids are riding the chair by session three usually, so it's, it's really amazing to see. Do you have any questions about it? Sorry.
Mr. Chair?
Yeah?
I just want to say what a great program it is. Both my kids started at the beginning, and we're talking about what such great teachers we have, and I'm blessed that my kids have had most of these teachers. We're in college app time, and I can tell you that on to my daughter Kendall's college apps is an essay about the ski and board program.
Oh, that's awesome. That's so great to hear.
It's, it's, it's an amazing program, and I think everybody should take a, take a name for it.
Yes, I agree.
So did, did we vote on this last year? Did we have to vote on this?
Yeah, because you got a lot of state...
I think so. I think technically we did.
You go to New Hampshire?
We go to, yes, we go to Hennepin, New Hampshire, Pat's Peak.
Why don't we vote now? Take a motion?
Yeah, that is, do we have funding yet for this, or is it...
We do, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Yeah, then we'll take a motion. I'll make a motion. Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion to approve the Ski and Snowboard Club for 2024 and 2025.
It'll be 25 technically, 25.
Chair seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Pass at 5-0.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Brazil, if you need anything, just let us know.
I will. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Yep. Next, we have the approval of school committee meeting minutes for October 24th, 2024. Open session.
I'll make a motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Chair seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Approval of school committee meeting minutes, October 24th, 2024, executive session.
Make a motion to approve.
Chair seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Acceptance of a donation of $69.42 from the American Online Giving Foundation to the Belmonte STEAM.
I'll make a motion to approve, Mr. Chair.
Chair seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Acceptance of a donation of five $60 gift cards from the Zonta Club of Chelsea in North Shore. These guys are awesome.
Very generous, very generous.
Really generous.
They'll do it every year.
You know, we definitely thank, thank you guys.
Motion to approve?
Chair seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Acceptance of a donation from $100, of $100 from Marsha Skinner for esports. So that's something we're working on right now.
We're working on it, so yeah, that, this will go into the student activities, and then, as soon as it gets up and running, they have $100.
That's great.
Make a motion to approve?
Chair seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
Approve, approval of approval.
I'm a little excited on this.
Bills dated November 14th, 2024, in the amount of $501,742.20.
Motion to approve?
Chair seconds. Do a roll. Mr. Hatch?
Yes.
Mrs. Mastrocola?
Yes.
Mr. Fisher?
Yes.
And Mr. Whitridge?
I already voted no on the amendment. I didn't say no, I'm sorry.
No, you just voted no on the amendment. This is just the bills.
Yeah, but it's supporting the bills on the amendments.
Okay. Chair, yes. Passes 4-1. Next public comment, as long as it's on the agenda.
Good evening. Matt Pelante, Precinct 2, Town Meeting. I just wanted to...
Your address.
Oh, I'm sorry, 2581. Wrong maybe. One thing I wanted to mention, I wanted to acknowledge Ms. Lukey. I was one of the veterans that was at that Veterans Day event at the Belmonte STEAM, and it was really warming and, and just tremendous to see that, you know, the work that they put into making sure that the students understood what Veterans Day is and who veterans are. I know I speak for the rest of the veterans that were up there, I was probably the youngest one there. You know, they were really delighted to see it as well. I mean, we got a lot of, a lot of gifts from the students. They drew us pictures and wrote us notes, and, yeah, and I got to read to Ms. Zabowski's, Zabowski's class, second grade class. I, my daughter's 26 years old, so I forgot how awesome second graders are and how curious they are, too. They made a whole bag of these, you know, medals that I'm going to pass on to all my veterans' friends, but they were, they were great. So I just wanted to acknowledge Ms. Lukey and her entire staff at that school. They really, they put on an amazing presentation and event. The students sang songs, and it was very patriotic, and I was really grateful to be a part of it. So that was one thing I wanted to mention. I also wanted to just make aware of, you know, I wanted the school committee and everyone to be aware of the coat drive that a couple firefighters in the town put on. It's December 5th at 6:00 PM at the Saugus Elks, and it's Mario Long and Andrew McDarmott, the two firefighters that put this event on. This is the second year, and they'll be working with the schools to make sure that any student in this town that needs a winter coat will get one. It's a great event, and it's going to continue on every year, but this year it's December 5th, Saugus Elks. And then one last thing is I'm a member of the Saugus Youth Prevention Coalition, which is a, a group of community partners who are coming together to improve the quality of life for the youth in this town. And I just wanted to mention that, you know, our next meeting is going to be December 2nd at 7:00 PM. We had a second meeting a couple of weeks ago, and the attendance is rising.
Where is it?
It's Zoom. It's going to be VerZoom.
Okay.
So I share it on all the Saugus pages, as well as the Lin item has been sharing the information as well, and I'll talk to Mr. Hashem and see if we can find a way to get it emailed out to everybody. But one of the things that we're working on is workshops for the parents, and we'll be sending on a survey soon to just kind of try to gather some information, gauge what parents are looking for in a workshop. So just a few things I wanted to mention. I really appreciate the time, Mr. Chairman and the school committee. Thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Not seeing anyone else.
Motion to approve?
Motion, motion to approve. This is what happens. I can't believe you caught it. Motion to adjourn.
Chair seconds. All in favor?
Aye.